I'm calling to be in order, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli here. DePena?
Here.
Graziano?
Here.
Notari?
Here.
Rovell?
Here.
Schumelberg?
Present.
Mayor Melham?
Here. Sunshine House.
Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, notice that this meeting was published in the Thursday, February 3rd editions of the Bellevle Times and Star Ledger. A copy of the annual meeting notice has been posted on the Bellevle Town Hall bulletin board and copied on file in the municipal clerk's office.
Pledge your leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation, our God, and the visual liberty and justice for all.
Report the manager.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to start off by reporting to the mayor and council that this afternoon we attended the suburban metro joint insurance fund award ceremony. Fourteen communities are in RJF, and only two received the gold status for safety incentive. I don't know if Bobby is here just yet, but Bobby played a big role in that, making sure that the training is done on a monthly basis, in services are done, and they recognized our good work preventing injuries on the job. The gold award comes with a $1,000 voucher for the community, so again, out of fourteen communities, only two received the gold status. Last meeting, we had some conversations on the WIC program, and just wanted to let everyone, we actually had a meeting that was tentatively scheduled for today, didn't take place, but the next meeting, hopefully, we'll be able to provide the council with a WIC update, that's for women and children, I know that was important. I'm sure the mayor's gonna get shredded, day is this Saturday, it's a very popular day for our community. And last, but not least on my list, I know somebody will have a question. Our audit is, did turn over the financial statement to us. It was the missing piece before we could actually put together the actual proposed budget. I anticipate next week or the following week, having a meeting with the budget committee, so that when we come back to our next meeting, we'll be ready to report the budget. Thank you, and that's all I have for now.
Questions for the manager?
I have a quick question through the chair. I know, Anthony, we've talked about the two crosswalks, the one on, I guess, Bellevle Avenue and Franklin Avenue, as far as getting those repaired, the blinking ones.
The push buttons.
Push buttons, because we had, I guess, both of them got knocked down.
Yeah, Bobby knows about that, but I'll triple check, and that's on the corner of...
Well, one is right by Chandelier, which is right on the side of the Wendy's there, and the other one, I guess, is on Bellevle Avenue, right by the park.
Right by the park.
Yeah.
Yeah, Garnett Avenue. And the other thing, just especially like on Sundays over at St. Anthony's there, we have those little stanchions that basically identify, you know, that people are gonna be walking here, because even though we have the electric there, it's, you know, people seem to zip up and down by St. Anthony's, especially during the ass.
I'll go from that with the chief.
Yeah, I know, I know we have a bunch of those stanchions.
Anybody else?
Just a moment.
Yeah, I do.
Councilman?
Yeah, Anthony and I have been talking about the, which we talked about at the last meeting, the Airbnbs, so he is working on that. We should have something at the next meeting for the council to look at, some type of a policy to modify it. I would like to do away with it completely, but we will have something to discuss at the next meeting Anthony's been working on.
Just a quick follow up. Other towns have adopted Airbnb policies, and also, to my surprise, I have to, councilman Notari brought it up to my attention, I looked today, there's over thirty something properties in Bellevle that are...
Yeah, they've been on, yeah.
I do, Mayor.
Sure.
Any updates on meters?
Meters, all capital, all capital projects or capital expenditures can be ordered with purchase orders as of May 3rd. So we have it, we have the meter picked out. The order will probably be placed on, on May 3rd. Because until May 3rd, that was the twenty days after the public hearing, we couldn't create the purchase order.
Right, but we have, will we want?
I believe we shared it with the council. I'll make sure, I'll send out an email so everybody can take a look at it if you have any questions.
Okay. Moving on, next item, report of the mayor. So we have two items for news to report. We have applications being accepted for Bellev's first ever farmer's market. That information is located on our social media and website. And also, on our social media and website is the fact that our CIRP team, our Citizens Emergency Response Team, is looking for members. A lot of people often say they want to volunteer. Perfect opportunity to volunteer, to be a member of our CIRP team. We recently had a couple different events in town, and getting busy now that the weather's getting nicer. We had a bag up workshop. Everybody knows that there's a plastic bag ban that we have to abide to, so our green team put on a green, I'm sorry, a bag up workshop and handed out some green team bags that you can use at the supermarket instead of using plastic. This past Saturday was recreation opening day. Always great to see the kids out there on a new field, new turf, and seeing all the smiles on their faces, always a good thing. Something that I didn't have as a kid and as a baseball player. This Saturday, I'm sorry, also Saturday was a busy day, community cleanup. We had a nice community cleanup, again, led by a green team. We started out at the senior center, we ended up down on Main Street, collecting litter that goes up against the Route 21 fence there by the Nutley border. Upcoming events, Saturday, April 30th, Community Shred Day is the manager mentioned. Information is available on our website. Wednesday, I just found out, Wednesday, May 4th, is our Special Olympics. Information will be available, I guess, on the website, but it starts at 9:30, goes to 2 o'clock in Branch Brook, Branch Brook, Brookdale Park. Thursday, May 5th, Storytime with a Cop at our Bellevle Public Library. Tuesday, May 10th, Municipal Election Day. Thursday, May 19th, Free Health Screening. Saturday, May 21st, Community Bike Ride. I've said it time and time again, last year's Community Bike Ride was probably one of my favorite events in my tenure so far as mayor. It was a great day, it was a beautiful day. Police Department does a great job, the commitment to our community police team is unparalleled, and I'm looking forward to another great day for that. And we are taking a break because of the council meeting that's on May 10th. Our next scheduled council meeting will not be until Tuesday, May 24th. That's it for me, next item is the approval minutes.
The combined conference and regular meeting of July 13th.
Make a motion.
It's section.
We have motion made in second, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli. DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Schumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes. Communications?
A request received from the residents of Fairway Avenue to conduct a block party on Friday, April 29th, from 6 to 10.
That goes to the police department directly? Okay, next item on our agenda is technically the ordinances. However, I'm gonna ask for a special consideration to move forward with a quick presentation. Councilman Cazarelli has put a resolution on the agenda, a resolution of condolence upon the passing of Mr. Henry Wells. We do know the family is here today, so because they're here and they're seated, we're gonna, if the council's okay with that, we're gonna just change the order of business real quick and allow Councilman Cazarelli the opportunity to present a proclamation to the family.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I know we have some anxious kids that get out of here, they don't wanna be here, so we changed order a little bit today. So last week, our town lost a great leader, an amazing family member, a veteran, you name it. That was Henry Wells. So I'd like to read this proclamation real quick, if I could. Whereas the township of Bellev lost a lifelong resident, Henry Wells, when he departed this life on April 15th, 2022, at the age of 74. Henry was graduate of Bellev High School, class of 1965. He was employed in the pharmaceutical industry for over thirty years, and most recently, he was employed as a senior supervisor for Merck Pharmaceuticals before his retirement. Henry Wells proudly served his country as a sergeant in the United States Army during the Vietnam War. He was a proud member of the veterans of foreign wars post-493 in Nutley. Henry received many medals and awards during his military career. He survived by his wife of eighteen years, Patricia Wells, his five loving children, and he's also survived by his many loving grandchildren, great grandchildren, nieces and nephews. Whereas the mayor and municipal council of the township of Bellev wish to extend a formal expression of their sorrow at the death of Henry Wells. Now therefore be resolved that the mayor municipal council of the township of Bellev, on behalf of its citizens, hereby extend its sincere condolences to his bereaved wife, Patricia, on her great loss.
Is that mic on? Yes. Sorry, the mic is off. Mommy?
Yeah.
Yeah? Thank you, on behalf of the Wells family, I want to extend a very deep appreciation. My father was a lifelong Bellev member, he loved this town. I also graduated from a Bellev High School, my younger brother, my older brother. We have very, very deep roots going back to this town, well over a hundred years. We appreciate the town. My great-great-grandfather was one that originally planted a number of the cherry blossoms that are throughout Bellev and Newark. This is important, I know a lot of the times resolutions, they get said, and you just kind of move on, but you are creating history and putting this in the, you know, the archives of the township, so it is appreciated. I know your family and a lot of the council members have a long time history with the Wells family. We certainly appreciate that, and we appreciate those expressions of love that came during the services, everything that some of you personally put out and visited the viewing and some of the things we received, it was very well noted, it was very well appreciated. And I just wanted to say, this is not routine. Your efforts here today are very, very much appreciated. Thank you, and I wish the best to you all and the rest of your service. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm gonna personally, we did say thank yous, but the fire department, the EMTs and the police department were excellent.
Yeah.
They reprieved him at the house, but he just didn't survive. Thank you.
If I may just say something, he was, Mr. Wells, I was in his company a few times. He was a true, true gentleman, and he was a strong man, but he was a gentle giant. And I really liked your father a lot, and my deepest condolences to all of you.
Thank you.
If the Wells family wants to leave, we'll give you a few seconds to do that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Chief, would you like to take care of, now, claim your seat? Closest to the door, chief, I get it. Closest to the door. Okay, the next item on our agenda is, hold on, ordinances? We have no ordinance, we have two ordinances for introduction.
Ordinance number one, an ordinance pending Chapter 19 of the Cloudified Ordnances in the Township of Bellev.
Make a motion to table, second. So we have an ordinance for introduction, there's been a motion to table. That motion receives a second, there's no discussion, there's a motion to table, so at this point, we are going to entertaining a vote to table the ordinance or not. Madam clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
No.
DePena?
No.
Graziano?
No.
Notari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Schumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
No. We have an ordinance for introduction, need a motion?
Motion.
Second, there's a motion made in second for introduction, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notari?
No.
Rovell?
No.
Schumelberg?
No.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
The car is introduced. Ordinance number two for introduction, ordinance to amend. Ordinance number three, six, four, one, creating permanent positions and adopting reclassification compensation plans.
Need a motion to introduce?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion made in second to introduce, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Schumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes. Next item on our agenda, I need a motion to open up public comment?
Motion.
Second.
With motion made in second to open public comments, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Schumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes. Hold on, yeah. Okay, so we're in the public commenting portion of the meeting. As most of you know by now, it is a time that you could talk almost about anything you want. You are limited to five minutes for your public commenting. We ask that once you raise your hand, I call upon you, come forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes. Ma'am, I'm sorry, huh?
Phyllis Frantantoni, Mount Prospect Avenue. This week, no, not this week, in fact, it was two weeks ago, I had the privilege to talk and then married it happen again. I called her and thanked her, because I've been talking to her too about the intersection, and I thanked her for getting it done and how the men that did it were so, so good. They really did a great job. But while talking to her, also got on the subject of the light down by ShopRite. Now, as of April 14th, 9:45 in the morning, she has had no written correspondence from anybody on the council or the town manager requesting that light. And she said, that's all that has to be done, not an email, not anything on the phone. It has to be written and sent to her. And then they will review it and get on it and get some kind of light down there. This is what she told me. In fact, I would like to... Give you this, this is the letter I sent her. And she acknowledged she received all my correspondence, she's got it on file. So I hope that we can get on this and get something done, maybe within the next couple of months, because it seems like deja vu, the same thing happened when I tried to get the light over on Union Avenue and Home Street, and they told me nothing could be done, but no letter was formally sent until I spoke to Joe D. and the engineering department, and then it got done. I have one other item in that I'd like to ask. I requested Oprah, and I got an email telling me that my Oprah was denied, and they gave me that it was NS, NJSA 47, semicolon, 1A, dash, A. I would like to know where in this statute that it states that my Oprah is re... That has anything to do with the Oprah I requested.
Do you want to leave that paperwork to get an answer, or?
I'm sure you know what it is, I know what it is, and Kelly's got the...
I have an idea of what it is.
I have, Kelly has...
I don't approve or deny overs, by the way.
Well, it was denied, and told me that I couldn't get it, which I think is absolutely ridiculous, because it has nothing to do with anybody's Social Security, their birth, where they work, anything like that. So I think that, you know, it's just playing games with it. So if you please, would look into it.
Sure.
There were no records on file, so there's nothing we could provide to you. There's nothing on file.
Something's gotta be around though for this, thank you.
Thank you. Next, sir.
Mr. Iacono, would you please do me the paper, distributing this to everyone in council?
We do, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Michael Sheldon, 47 Floyd Street. As the document is being distributed, let me read prepared statement. My attorney, Mr. Cates, has advised me to provide the Bellev Township governing body and the township attorney with another opinion and his advice to you to properly resolve the ongoing issue concerning the illegal appointments and operation of the planning board. To begin, Mr. Cates has asked me to provide you with a copy of relevant case law, City of Hoboken versus City of Jersey City, which is attached. This case dealt with the application of the de facto officer doctrine and effectively says that the failure to have a quorum cannot be cured retroactively, which is what you're attempting to do tonight with the introduction of the one ordinance and the five or six items on the consent agenda. The de facto officer doctrine confers validity upon acts performed by a person acting under the color of official title, even though it is later discovered that the legality of that person's appointment or election to office is deficient. But you can't apply the doctrine of a de facto public officer to that officer's actions at a meeting lacking a quorum. Put another way, if you had no quorum in the past, the board lacked jurisdiction to decide anything, and this lack of jurisdiction cannot be cured by attempting to make an unqualified participant then qualified retroactively. The absence of a quorum voids or invalidates any actions taken. Those actions cannot be resurrected by declaring the participant de jure rather than de facto non protunk. This is because the actions taken were transactional. Avoid transaction cannot be resurrected and cannot be cured with stroke of a pen, as you are trying to do tonight. If you disagree, the best approach in the interest of innocent third parties that may have relied upon actions taken by the planning board in the recent past is to seek declaratory judgment in Superior Court. Let a court decide whether Mr. Cates is correct, and is corrected his interpretation, or Mr. Martino is correct. Without it, the status of approved development applications will remain uncertain and will be detrimental to the public interest in resolving these important issues. I would, and those aligned with me, would support your efforts to obtain the declaratory judgment. So you have been served.
Thank you.
I still have a few months on sight, I believe my five minutes is up.
You do.
I didn't hear the buzzer go off.
Oh, I said you do, you have time.
All right, thank you, thank you, I thought you were telling me my time was up already.
Of course not.
All right. I also want to add that what you're attempting to do tonight is amend 19-1. 19-1, as Mr. Cates previously argued, was completely invalidated in 1990, thirty-two years ago, when we switched from the commissioner form to council manager. So you can't amend an ordinance that hasn't existed legally for thirty-two years. On top of that, in June 2020, to try to stop all of this legal hemorrhaging, you passed another ordinance to rescind Chapter 2, Section 8, which was the legally correct way to prescribe planning board membership. So in fact, right now, you have no ordinance, you have no legal ordinance in place at this point by which to appoint planning board members legally. So another thing to keep in mind. I also want to bring up two other things. You never have answered the scandal that I exposed about the water bill situation. Last year, according to Mr. Iacono's own report, you took in over $8 million from us from our water bills, which doubled last year. Meanwhile, you only paid Newark less than $3.6 million. So keep in mind those two numbers, you took in $8 million plus, you paid Newark $3.6 million. That means that there was a reserve of $4.5 million that you made away with, which I'm calling rightfully so, a slush fund. So when you tell the community, look how great I am, I kept your property tax increased to $39 or $38 last year, that's not the truth. You actually added a backdoor property tax to all of our homes in the amount of over $400. Lastly, I want to say something about the delay in the budget introduction. You were by law supposed to introduce it at the last council meeting. You failed to do so then and now. If this budget was good news, Mr. Melham, you would have skyriders all overhead all day long, marching bands parade through the streets saying, what a wonderful leader you are. The fact that that budget hasn't been introduced means one thing and one thing only, it's bad news, and you're refusing to present it before May 10th because of you know the impact it would have on your chances for reelection.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else to public comment, Mr. Frantantonio?
Just to follow up on Mr. Sheldon's comments, these six appointments you have on the agenda, appointed non protunk, your own agenda proves why you shouldn't appoint them. Number one, you're just introducing ordinance to amend the ordinance for appointing planning boards. So that means you don't have a legal ordinance in place to appoint anybody. And I'm talking to you, my councilman, you...
Please address the chair, Mr. Frantantonio.
I could talk to anybody I wanted, okay?
Well, you can't appoint them to members and speak them directly.
Well, you know, after last year, I took out Robert Fools' Water. You are 100% wrong, so let me continue. So you got this ordinance tonight for introduction, which you're gonna have to hold a public hearing on, to correct an error. You don't have a legal ordinance, by your own admission, to appoint planning board members. Then you go to the end of the agenda, at the end of the meeting, you're gonna go into private session. What are you going to private session? To discuss litigation on this planning board matter. So nothing's resolved, how do you have the nerve? You know, you introduced an ordinance, you know you're gonna go to litigation, how do you have the nerve? I hope you both know on these six appointments, because you're total illegally. Unless, you know, politicians like lawsuits, because they get to hire attorneys, the taxpayers pay the attorneys, and then it's on the turn to give you a campaign contribution in the electing time. So I'm telling you, you're totally wrong with this, and hopefully, Mr. Martino, who's certified by the Supreme Court as a matrimonial lawyer, I hope you give this board the correct legal advice. Because other than that, you're gonna cost the taxpayers a lot of money, and the taxpayers, unfortunately, firing a lawyer are gonna be proven correct. Now, everybody's got the Observer today. There's an interview with Mr. Rovell and the mayor Melham and all, and there's an article there, he's talking about, he's quoting the paper, he's talking about the Walter Kitty. We get up to, with the new development that he did not approve, the Walter Kitty site was approved underneath Melham administration years before the mayor took office. But he states, we get up to, for the new development, we get up to 900 a year as opposed to 10,000 for empty contaminated land. Well, I went through the records, and I went to the assessments office. That was not vacant land, it was Walter, the Goodyear Tire Center.
You're right.
And empty, empty, for 2021, the township was getting $569,000 a year for grass growing on it, not 10,000. I just stated in the paper, you brought it out front and get a copy of that document.
That's incorrect. That was Bellev Avenue and William Street, $10,000.
Now Walter Kitty, now, because under the Kimball administration, Walter Kitty site did not want a pilot. You got in office, and you went to them and give them a pilot. This year, because of your legislation, we're getting zero taxes from them. And then when they're up, you gave them a pilot for five years, so we're only gonna get 20% of taxes the first year, the first five years, the first year, and then 40% of it all. So thanks to you, you know, your statements, I just can't believe you have the audacity to go to newspaper and make these outrageous lies when anybody with little knowledge can go and fact check you. You're wrong. Not 10,000 on all these sites.
I admit that, it was not 10,000. I'm talking about different properties.
Yeah, well, whatever, all these properties, you know, you just are killing us with these pilots.
The entire council voted on that pilot, by the way, Mr. Frantantonio.
Mr. Melham?
Oh, no? I don't grant any pilots, sir. The entire governing body has to vote for them.
You're the one that pushes them, and I blame them all. You're correct, I blame them all, but you're the one pushing these things, you're the one bragging in newspaper about all the developers, and you're claiming all the development in the beginning of the article. A couple paragraphs down, you said 65% of these things were approved before it took office.
That's true.
So I wish people, go get the newspaper and read the article, can you see how it conflicts itself?
At a time, Mr. Frantantonio, I thank you for wrapping that up.
In one editorial, you just conflict yourself several times.
Anybody else for public comment, sir?
Yeah, anyone, my name's Michael Shapiro, 712, excuse me, Giraldon Street in Bellevue, New Jersey. I moved in my house in 1998, and I have a small commercial truck that had been parking there for five years back in 98 to 2000, say about 2002, 2020. I don't know if you recall, we had the Passaic Valley Sewage Commission, they were cleaning up the Third River Brook over there. And while they were cleaning it up, they started yelling at me, hey, you better clean up all that garbage back there that's being dumped back there. But it was my neighbor in the back, I don't know if you know Louis Santuso, he had a pool company, he was dumping all kinds of pool, concrete, chemicals back there. So Passaic Valley, Brian, Bob DeVita, he passed away, but he wrote me a letter and said, listen, bring this down to the building department and have me clean it all up. I brought it down to the building department, maybe like 2002, and all of a sudden, I started getting all kinds of truck tickets, about no parking. Frankie Lorenzo, he sent the health department out to have me clean up my property. So when I went to court, he basically made a deal with me, like, almost like a mop, your handshake, a hug and a kiss, listen, you know what? handshake, a hug and a kiss, listen, you know what? That's my cousin back there, leave him alone, leave the garbage back there, and you can keep your truck here. So I parked my truck there for twenty-three years. Twenty-three years, no problem. I got a small commercial truck. Now I find out his cousin just moved, he just sold the house, he just sold the house, and now he sends me a ticket. Frankie Lorenzo sends me a ticket for commercial parking. What are you kidding me? I got a million dollars worth of garbage dumping back at my property, seven twelve was connected to Grove Street, all right? It's all back there. And here's the picture, you guys have it? It was about a million, million dollars worth of garbage that illegally dumped. You know, I kept my, you know, I kept my mouth shut. I don't care, you know what? I got a small truck. I got three quarters of acre of property. I had three lots at one time, it was twenty-seven Grove Street, and I had seven fourteen, seven sixteen Geraldine Street, and then seven twelve. I combined it all together. But Passaic Valley, they wrote up a nice letter, and then when I brought it, when I brought the letter down to the town, you know, basically, you know, silenced me, you know? So I did whatever, you know, because I got a small truck. So for twenty-three years, he didn't bother me. All of a sudden, he sells his house now, all of a sudden, he wants to come after me. What are you kidding me? I mean, I have no problem, you know, I understand, commercial truck, you know, it's supposed to park it there, whatever, and, you know, I, you know, I have no problem. But listen, if you want me to move the truck, you got to clean that up, spend a million dollars now to clean up that environmental, all kinds of pool chemicals, it was drugs back there dumped for years and years. He had, he was in a pool business, he retired. He was dumping all kinds of garbage over the embankment. You know, I, I, I do recycling, you know, I work with everybody, I worked everybody in a garbage, garbage business. So I know, I know the ropes, I know how it goes. So that's what I'm faced right now. So he sends me a ticket, I don't want to confront the guy, you know what I mean? You know, twenty-three years later, all of a sudden, I don't want to give you a ticket and clean up all that, you got an environmental waste back there, you know what I mean? You can come on by and send everybody back there, you know, walk all the way in the back of my yard, and you'll see all types of garbage dumped there. Over the years, I removed the drums, I removed, Passaic Valley, they actually removed a lot of the drums and chemicals, they moved everything along in the embankment. But they wrote a letter, listen, you got to clean up that whole, all that garbage. And as soon as he, you know, I brought the letter down, he, oh, you know, made a big deal, like, you know, like, listen, leave my cousin alone, and I won't bother you. So for twenty-three years, that's what I stand. And all of a sudden, I get a ticket now, I got to defend it, you know? I have no problem, listen, I can move my truck, but spend a million dollars, you know, his cousin sold the house and to clean it up, somebody's got to clean up that property back there.
So, Sarah, thank you for your comment, excuse me, yeah. Let me just talk.
I'm sorry. Frank.
That's where the building department is.
Right. I made a deal with him twenty-three years.
Our management's ticket, sure.
Yeah, I made a deal with him twenty-three years ago to leave his cousin alone back there. So, Sarah, what I'll tell you is, first of all, thank you for comments.
We don't, we're the governing body, we don't necessarily run the day-to-day operations, the manager here does, I would recommend.
I appreciate you listening. You guys can all come back then, you'll see all kinds of illegal dump.
Listening is one thing, but he's somebody that could actually get to the bottom of it, so I would encourage you to directly engage him via email or give him any documentation you want.
I appreciate it. I just, you know, gave it to you.
It's not something that we can solve ourselves right here, but I thank you for your comments.
I appreciate it, right?
Send him an email.
Come on out, listen, you're all welcome to come out there, it's your order to be drinking, you know? You guys want to keep drinking contaminated water, tighten, you know what I mean? All right, I appreciate it very much if you can investigate it instead of just blowing it off.
We don't investigate, but the manager heard you, assistant manager's here, I'm sure that they'll, they'll get the right people involved.
I appreciate it very much, thank you. Have a good night.
Anybody else for public comment?
Five minutes is kind of separate.
Hi, Carol Becknell, two eighty-seven Fairway Avenue. I have a couple of questions. EAP/DEP update of when they're coming, any hard date? Because two weeks ago, I was told, in a couple of weeks. During last week, I got a phone call from Mr. Di Lorenzo, you're nudging him, and told me, yeah, in a week or so.
So I think you have to ask Mr. Di Lorenzo then.
No, but he said that the town manager was sending it up. I don't even know, he doesn't even know what he made to call me.
It's not Di Lorenzo, it's Harris.
Right, exactly.
I will say, from my part in this whole thing, is the fact that, I have many batteries. From my part in this, today I was on my assistant county mayor's call, and a bunch of the mayors there raised the issue with flooding. DEP is coming back, and I only know this because we had a mayor's call today. They're going to be coordinating, I know no other details, I know no other specifics, but I can guarantee you that when I do know that they're going to be available, I'll make sure Fairway and some of the other residents know about it. But other than that, I can't speak to Mr. Harris, Mr. Di Lorenzo, the manager's here to discuss that.
Right, so maybe you can answer some questions, because you were the one who said a couple weeks.
So we met yesterday. We asked if we can invite neighbors, and they said for the initial review, no, that they wanted to meet with town officials. And I'm speaking as loud as I can as Kelly's replacing the battery.
So who did you meet with first?
We met with just a, I have this card, DEA.
DEP?
DEP, and again, they're going to formalize and give us everything as far as what has been done to this point. But you're not going to like to hear this, but I'm going to tell you, and certainly, the OEM director, deputy chief Corvo was there, the assistant town manager, Mark Minikiti was there. They are, right now, in compliance, and there is no outstanding violations on both the cemetery and the golf course. The golf course was issued a warning, I'm going to get a copy of that warning, and as soon as I get that, I certainly will make that available to you. They're getting a warning for work that they did without a permit. However, right now, based on their review, based on their federal organs inspection, violations in the cemetery or on the golf course.
And they walked the property.
And they walked the property, so. So, and again, I will provide you with a copy of the written warning that DEP has issued to the golf course. They did, you know, they did mention some other things that we have to further look into. There's outstanding violations on some of the other surrounding properties that could impact the floodway or the flood plan and the floodway. These are not property of the golf course, or property of the cemetery.
Okay. Thank you for that follow-up. And then what about, just the Pasca Valley water coming and cleaning it up? They were supposed to give you a hard date.
Mary, you might be able to help me with this. Maybe I'll be with this. We did receive an email from Passaic Valley, and again, I just want to clarify.
It was generic.
They basically say, we come once or twice a year, and they will continue to come once or twice a year.
They don't give you a hard date?
They do not give us a hard date, and I certainly can try to get one for us.
Right, because it just ducktails onto what that gentleman right before me says. You know, if he's got debris at his end, which is on the other side of the, of Geraldine, then that water just backs up because it can't flow. So, I mean, all this has to get cleaned up, and who's responsible for that? Is it, you know, Frank? At this point, because he did the handshake? I mean, it sounds facetious, but I'm being perfectly honest. I mean, someone's responsible for it, someone has allowed that to go on. So that needs to be addressed. And then I just have a side question that has nothing to do with any of this here. Why are you approving minutes from July and where in April?
So we only get to...
Do we know what the minute said in July? I just questioned.
Yeah, we actually received a copy in our, in our agenda, and again, you said it, you said it perfectly correct. We, the governing body, approve the minutes that are put on the agenda from the clerk's office. We don't type them, we can't make them appear any faster. When they're ready to be presented to us, they're in our packet, we have the ability to review them if we weren't there that meeting, and then we vote on them.
Because it just seems a very long delay in approving that.
But thank you.
Anybody else for public comment?
First, we've got to get some disinfectant here, COVID is still around.
You have a mask on.
As you're wearing the mask.
Thankfully you have a mask.
You don't know, it's going to spray all that, anyway.
First night by Bell Street. First of all, listen to Mr. Frank Antoni and Mr. Sheldon said about ordinance number one. I read that language too, and I have to agree with them that the language is incorrect. You can't use an ordinance that has not existed since July first, nineteen ninety, but I don't know why you're bent on using that ordinance. Well, you read the letter about Mr. Case. Mr. Case, I believe, is totally correct in his language there. Let me ask you something. You have a hard problem. You're going to go to cardiologist or you're going to go to a general practitioner? Nothing against Mr. Martino, but he can't possibly, not, but he can't possibly know the laws on planning and zoning. Mr. Case is the author of this stuff. We should be following him. Because you have these ordinances on here, which are incorrect based on the language. Also, if you look at the resolutions, you want to make some appointments there, make some corrections. They weren't clerical errors. To me, they were deliberate and possibly criminal, as far as I'm concerned, in my opinion. It can't be negligent. What else do I have here? And then you have the resolutions. You want to reappoint all these people. First of all, forever, since nineteen ninety, every council member got a pick. So why should these council members pick your appointments only? Answer that question. Why only yours? Everybody should get a pick. Then you have the alternates there, then you have one alternate jumping the other. It should be seniority, like it always has historically been under the council manager former government. But it's not happening here. I still feel like I mentioned this before, and I'm going to make, I feel like I'm in a different country, a third world country sometimes with the answer that I get here. Alternates should be by seniority, and everybody should get their own pick, and whoever doesn't get picked, that's their problem, they're out.
Does that say that anywhere in the state statute or administrative code or anywhere in Massachusetts?
What's that?
That everybody gets a pick?
The alternates? I just said customarily. It doesn't say you get the pick.
So it's okay to go customarily when you want to go customarily?
No, no, no. I say...
Show me the law.
The difference between me and you, I say it the way it is. I don't make up stories.
Show me the law.
That's the difference.
Do you have the law?
You're a good storyteller, believe me when I do.
You have the law.
You've taken up my time according to Robert's Rules of Order, and I researched it too, like Mr. Frank Antoni, so let me finish. See, what you're doing here, you force, you force a number of citizens here to spend money out of their pocket just to prove that you're wrong. But I don't know if laws are, I can't make a comment, but I hope we can sue you for our damages and our cost that is costing us to defend the general public here, in this case here. Because the average person will not go into their pockets and hire an attorney to fight what is correct. And correctly. The water bills, well, if you mention that, I'm not going to go there. The budget, I know damn well you know how much it's going to go up. Give me an idea. You know, what are you sure? Four million, five million, six million, ten million? Just something, you're sure. You're not going to tell me, you know, I've been around here long enough.
I wish I could, I'd be...
I mean, you have to have an idea.
I'd be working on Wall Street if I knew that answer.
I know, but you have to have an idea. I know there's, no, you have to, look, I sat up there for eight years myself, so if you could tell me anything you want, I'm not, I don't believe you. I don't believe you, because I know it. Every council member knew why you purposely passed the budget by a certain time because, well, you had to make up a story about, you know what? We wait for state aid was always needed, so you can get all the numbers in. So that's the typical answer, and you know, that's the facts. They're not fiction, that's a different story. And there's one more thing I have to ask that, for you. And I mentioned to you about the appointment. Oh, we talked about development. City of Harson, as small as it is, in twenty eighteen, they had a total of thirty-four police officers. And it has happened, the police chief happens to be strummed along, if you related to him. Okay. So real quick, so now...
Ma'am, I need you to wrap up.
I am wrapping it up. Guess what? They have to hire fifty-one cops now total because of all that development they got there, and that does not include the fire department, and look how small that town is.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment?
I don't, I have a question.
Okay, ma'am, I'm going to call on you.
You said five minutes, right?
I did.
Okay, good. My name is Evelyn Jimenez Kirin, and I own a home at Thirteen Hill Street in Bellevue. By the way, gentleman's my neighbor. I know that we're supposed to talk about what this is the last meeting that we're going to have, and the voting is in two weeks. Before I make my decision on who I'm going to vote for, my husband votes his wife, I vote mine. My question is to you.
No, 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 ma'am, you're going to address the chair, please.
Okay, the chair is this. I've been looking through Mr. Pina's social page, looking at who I want to vote to. I look at yours, I look at this gentleman, Belville, and everybody. My thing is with Mr. Pina is, if she's running for councilwoman of Bellevue, why are her children going to Queen of Peace? Isn't the Bellevue school system good enough for her kids? Why does she own a business in North Arlington, New Jersey and not in Bellevue? Which she just recently, I stand corrected, you now got one down, I'm twenty-one. Another thing is, excuse me?
So that negates that question.
That negates that question, but the question where she has her kids in another school in another town and not the town that she's sponsoring, you know, and collecting insurance and health insurance, why is it? I mean, how do you expect for me to make a decision when I'm looking at all these ghost things? And for the record, I own the property in North Arlington, New Jersey, at Ten Pulaski Drive. And now that I see her, you used to, you are, you used to be my next door neighbor. Okay, you live in North Arlington there. Yes, you do.
Ma'am, I'm going to need you to address the chair, please.
You live, she lives in North Arlington, New Jersey. I don't understand how she's living in two towns. She lives in North Arlington, New Jersey, and you, Mr. Melham, you know she lives there. You know how I know she lives there? Because I buy, when the epidemic was happening, when I lived in North Arlington, I used to take walks because I suffer from anxiety, and I used to get out of my house to take walks, and I would see Mr. Pina in the town. I also used to see her with her children in the school. You have two. And I always used to see her around town walking, and she lives on Noel Drive in North Arlington, New Jersey, sir. Okay, and you know that, you know how I know that? Because I saw you in her house, okay? And you're getting insurance that we, the taxpayers, are paying it's two weeks before the election, but I don't know what this town is doing. I'm not from this town, I just moved here because I married someone who lived in this town. And my thing is, you people are falling asleep, and this chick is cashing money.
Ma'am, ma'am, I need you to address the chair.
Okay, she's cashing money, the taxpayers' money, of getting insurance for her, for her family and everything, and this woman lives in North Arlington, New Jersey. I am willing to go under oath, under the guillotine, and I have more than enough proof at the time when I need to present it that you, usted, you, you live in North Arlington, New Jersey. I don't understand, no. Uh-uh. I got three minutes and fifty-eight seconds, no way. Uh-uh, baby, you ain't playing that with me. You live in North Arlington, New Jersey, you're my next door neighbor, excuse me?
One minute and fifty-seven.
Three minutes and fifty-eight seconds.
How can I have...
Then you need to, you need to pay more attention in math class with Mr. Melham. No, I don't think so. I have three minutes and fifty-seven seconds.
I know so.
Three minutes and forty-eight seconds, okay?
Chief, please.
So you live, no, 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 wait a minute. She lives in North Arlington, that's a crime, that's a fraud. Where is she voting? Did she ever vote in North Arlington? I saw her in North Arlington the day we voted for the mayor at the door of the school. I can't say that she voted, I did not see her vote, but I did remember seeing her there. And it wasn't until I started looking to her social media page, she lives, how do you live in two towns? And you're running for one town, but you have your kids in another town. She lives in North Arlington, New Jersey, I am willing to swear that in an affidavit. And let me tell you, you guys need to do an investigation, because this lady is a fraud. Usted es un fraude, señor.
Ma'am, I need you to address the chair.
Yes, you do. You live in North Arlington, you know you live in North Arlington, and you know that I see you, and you know you're my next door neighbor. I don't lie. This man can tell me, I know, I'll put my head on the guillotine for you. I know you live in Belleville. And if I were to vote for you, you're a Belleville resident. I'm not going to vote for somebody that says that they live in Belleville and they don't live here. You live in North Arlington, New Jersey, you live on Noel Drive in North Arlington. You still live there. I drove by my house on Sunday, and you were in front of your house. And the store.
Thank you.
Y'all be going to have an investigation.
Yeah, summer home.
No, summer home, my ass. She live near the town.
This is a public meeting, it's a public meeting.
No, she, yeah, summer home.
It's still a public meeting.
She's telling her head in the back.
It's a public meeting, ma'am. If you can't conduct yourself appropriately, I'm going to ask you to leave. Thank you.
You're not going to ask me to leave because I'm telling you the truth.
I will ask you to leave.
That's okay. Voting is coming, voting day is coming, sir, don't worry. You live in North Arlington, if you don't.
We're freezing here tonight. Good evening, Ramon Fleisch, May 33, Main Street. First of all, to the great team and the council and everyone who was out there Saturday, thank you very much for cleaning up. Greatly appreciated. It would have, it would have really been nice if the people that dumped the majority of the stuff on 21, if they were there, helping you guys out, because I know you guys did the best you could, you know, so that's all. See, we're nice tonight.
Thank you. Anybody else in public comment? Sir?
Cilio Jerry Del Gercio, 8 Roman Street in Belleville. I normally wasn't going to come up tonight because Mr. Frank Antonia had talked, Sheldon had talked, Ariel Droz talked, but then I asked for Mario if he had a copy of this ordinance that's being introduced tonight. Now, I hope that this is not the ordinance in my hand that's being introduced, because it's totally deficient, doesn't even comply with state statute. And, and I'll be honest with you, I don't, it even says...
Jer, Jer, Jer. Not on what?
I don't know.
State statute actually says it's the mayor's appointment.
No, it does not. On this former government, it says it's the council, unless the council wants to give it to the mayor or even to the manager.
But now you're against the ordinance giving it to the council.
No, no. This is a deficient ordinance. Okay, I'll, I'll point it out to you. All right? Six other citizens in the municipality will be appointed by the mayor and council jointly, which I agree, I have no problem. However, members of the Class IV shall hold no other municipal office except that one member may be a member of the zoning board of adjustment, and one member may be a member of the board of education, member of the environmental commission if there is one, and is also a member of the planning board. But, the problem with this is, number one, it does not mention employment with the town. It says no other municipal office, but doesn't mention employment, and that's in the state statute. Number one. The other part is, the last sentence down here is totally asinine. The planning board shall have four alternate members? No, it's only two. And it says one in each class two and class three, and two in class four. There is only two, they are in class four. To continue with this, the terms of class one, and class two and class three, alternate members shall coincide with the terms of the regular members in their class. Alternate members of class four shall serve for a term of two years, which is correct, all different two years, not the same year when they get appointed, provided however that the initial terms of such members shall be one for two years, one for one year and one for two years respectively. Class two and class three alternate members shall serve in the absence of the regular members of their class. It's totally wrong. I'd love to know who the hell wrote this up. Okay? Because here is the rule, so you know. There's two alternates, they have to have the same requirements as class four members. And any alternate could serve in the absence of any class. That's what's in the state statute, and that's what the law is. So, what you introduced tonight isn't worth the paper it's written on. Okay? Thank you.
Anybody else in public comment?
I didn't know if I had to request this thing.
It's okay, just go and raise your hand, just state your name and address. For the record, you have five minutes, ma'am.
Mercedes Glarza, the daughter of Jolie Hernandez. That's my mom. We just moved here to Belleville. What I need is, I tried to communicate with you yesterday about the vendings, and I would like to hand in an application today for that.
Sure, so I did reply to you.
Yes.
So, you didn't try and communicate with me. You did, you did communicate with me, I did reply. You sent me the application for your green application. I forward, I replied to you and CC, the deputy clerk, who's in charge of that.
Jackie, yes, well, yeah.
Awesome. So, I would like to give that to you, and I also would like some more information on the block party that's going to be happening on Friday. And I would also like a list of events that will be happening that we can have vending opportunities to go to.
All on our website. So, I know you're new to town, so our website is very active, all the community events are listed there. And I'll give you a little tip that most people don't realize, if you go to the bottom of the website, put your email address in, every single Monday morning, you get an email of all the upcoming meetings and events for that week. So, that's probably the best way, follow our social media, welcome to Belleville, and look forward to jewelry, you said, right? I remember the email. Look forward to seeing it on Green Fair, I mean, at the farmer's market.
Yes.
Thank you. Anybody else, sir?
Mr. Mayor and Council, my name's Jim Kirin from 13 Hill Street. To me, I have this very important concern on Gerollaman Street. The address, I believe, is 362. There's a tree in front of that house on the north side. If you look at it, it expect, there were a couple large, oversized branches on that tree. God forbid, if somebody, if that tree or if that branch falls down on Gerollaman Street, God forbid, whether it's being rotted, whether an act of God, whatever, town officials drive on Gerollaman Street all the time, the police department, the fire department, the public works department, and hundreds of cars travel that street every day. And if you look at that tree, you've got a branch, or several branches, that go from the north side of that street to the other side of the street, which is the south side. And I want all of you to travel. And again, that...
I know.
Pardon?
I know well the truth.
You know what? Okay. God forbid if that branch, and it's a heavy duty branch, falls off, hits a child coming or going to school, or strikes a car with passengers and a driver, you're looking at a damn lawsuit in this town. And I think that tree should be trimmed ASAP. Okay? You shouldn't, to me, you know, everybody has their own opinion. To me, it's a very dangerous situation, and I'm going to try to avoid this town of being, having a lawsuit. Okay? So, you know what I'm talking about? Don't sit on it. I'm sorry.
I reported it, I reported it. There's a similar one on Belleville Avenue, hangs way over the street, and if it's an early snowfall in October, November, and the tree still has leaves on it, it's a hazard. I reported it. I'm told it's not a town tree, they have to talk to the property owner to try and get that trimmed.
Okay. Also, the golf course on Belleville Avenue, where it jumps from one block to the other near Franklin Avenue, I know it's a county road, but there's a couple trees that need trimming in that area.
That's, that's the second one. I'm talking, okay?
And I complained about that last year.
I'm sorry?
I also complained about that last year.
All right. But this one on Gerollaman Street, it should be corrected as soon as possible. Those branches should be taken down ASAP. And also, to the town manager, that new garbage collection company that came into town, first of all, I think the truck number was 119 or 190. Okay? No front license plate. Plus, I live on Hill Street. When that truck finishes its route up to Gerollaman Street, you know what the guy does? He backs all the way down till liberty. Okay? We have schoolchildren that may be chain walking on that block. We have senior citizens that's walking their dogs on that street. God forbid if that truck backing all the way down Hill Street strikes somebody. Okay? Can you talk to the company about that? And also, it was somewhere in the observer that they missed a big mouth at the end of the truck with their garbage. Same thing goes with this new garbage truck. The guy's stone aim strike, maybe they need to go to a baseball stadium and get some training or something like that. All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else in public commenting?
Motion to close.
You're in, I hear, I'll take a motion to close.
Second.
A motion made in second to close public comment, and clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
Depena.
Yes.
Frazziana.
Yes.
Natori.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Trumal Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. Five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. We don't have to do 12, then, right? Are you ready? Five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. Anybody else? If not, a motion would consent agenda, with the exception of five, six, seven, eight, nine, and 10. Motion?
Motion.
Second. A motion made in second with consent agenda, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli. Depena.
Yes.
Frazziana.
Yes.
Natori.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Trumal Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. How do you want to handle that?
I want to motion the table, I mean...
Table the bulk of them or table the...
Table, table the bulk of them.
All right, you made the motion, do you have a second?
Second.
We have a motion made in second to table the bulk of them. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
No.
Depena.
No.
Frazziana.
No.
Natori.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Trumal Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
No. Okay, we have five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 on, I guess now we're in discussion, if you want to discuss, if not, you can...
Yeah, I definitely want to discuss. So, we don't have a legal ordinance in place, but yet we're appointing people to this. My understanding is, Chapter 19 does not exist under the Faulkner Act how we are organized. It exists under the Walsh Act, which is how commissioned form of government is organized. Why are we going to continue to do things illegally, which we've already proven we've done, and now we're just going to continue that on? I'm kind of in awe of that. So, you guys continue to do what you want to do, I just think this is absolutely wrong, and you can't go back in time and change the law.
Okay. Anybody else? Nope?
Oh, by the way, another quick thing. An ordinance does not supersede a statute, and you're aware of that, Steve, and I pointed that out to you on several occasions, and that's what you're doing here. You're trying to supersede a statute which falls under the Walsh Act, and that's not ours anymore. We're under the Faulkner Act. So be it, you guys do what you think you're right, but I think you're totally wrong, and we should hire somebody that has expertise in this field and have them rewrite this so we do it legally, so all these people that got approvals aren't at risk.
You can certainly propose that at the next workshop.
I'll propose it right now.
Okay. A motion to move, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10.
Someone will...
A motion made.
Second.
A motion made second, move five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli. Depena.
Yes.
Frazziana.
Yes.
Natori.
No.
Robel.
No.